Good morning, it's November 21st. It's 10 o'clock and all three county commissioners here. I ask that we rise for a moment of silent meditation and then pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We will now have consents and approval from our county administrator.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving to you.
We have 15 exonerations for $41,006.78. Vouchers, General County Fund, $1,050,005.47. Cole Severance, $1,067.22. 911, $32,788.80. Chestnut Ridge Park, $378.11. Mason Dixon Park, $423.16. Assessor's valuation, $4,009.53.03. Payroll account, $199.72. Star City TIF, $158.729.13. Morgantown Industrial TIF, $67,006.22.42. Mon General TIF, $367,003.98.77. And the University Town Center TIF, $1,191,869.56. Purchasing card vouchers, General County Fund, $121,269.64. 911, $10,550.45. Mason Dixon Park, $159.90. Assessor's valuation, $460.47. For a voucher total of $3,917.05. We have budget revisions for, in-house budget revision for litter control in the General County Fund. We have state approval required for general fund accounts, dams and dredging, and county clerk elections. And then we have position vacancies for boards and authorities, the Western Board of Zoning Appeals, the Planning Commission, Mon County Development Authority, and Mon County Building Commission, the Kent Muffley and Mason Dixon Park Advisory Boards, and fiduciary orders for November 21st, 2018.
Move for approval with discussion.
Second. Move in second, although, oh.
I just wanted to point out one thing in the vouchers when I was going through it. It has the first invoice for our new insurance, as you guys had a meeting with them last week. But the other thing is, we have to remember is, our bonding is now covered through our insurance policy. So we had a couple vouchers for bonding, which we pulled, that don't need to be made effective until the beginning of the year. But we pulled them and then we'll research whether those are counted in the ones that we actually get for free. So try to make sure that we're looking at every penny and dollar.
Okay.
That's all.
Okay. No more further discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. It passes. Okay. We have possibly introduction of some new employees and personnel changes? Is MJ here? I didn't see her.
Um, no, I don't see her.
Do we want to just announce, since, you know, since she did?
I mean, she requested it to be on the agenda for today.
Yeah, in case, yeah, just in case something, there was an emergency there, so that's, I'd rather.
Rachel Arbogast has been interviewed and will be, has been offered a job as a part-time relief worker for the Youth Services Center. She is going to be working part-time, $10 an hour, and no benefits.
And she, we do have a letter in our file for this that MJ sent us. And she also said on a on-call basis. So I move for approval.
Second. Proper move in second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. It passes. Okay. At this time, we will have comments from the public. If you'd like, you come in front of the podium, please state your name, your address, and you get three minutes, and we'd love to hear from you. Okay. Good. You go second, okay? Okay. Good morning.
Good morning. My name's Janice Morris. I'm from PO Box 72, Blacksville, West Virginia, 5861 Mason Dixon Highway.
Rebecca Thomas, from 357 St. Leo Road, West Virginia.
Okay.
And I'm here to encourage the commissioners not to adopt the First Amendment for Emergency Ambulance Service provision, as was presented at the working meeting last Wednesday. I have been fortunate to get a copy of that and have reviewed it somewhat closely, and on behalf of the citizens of the western end, I think there are some tenets in this amendment and Schedule A that require some closer consideration. Of concern is, at the meetings that I've been at previously and speaking with Mr. Sakura at the town meeting, the spirit of collaboration, cooperation, is such that the closest ambulance should respond. Is that not accurate?
Mm-hmm.
And I don't believe that that is contained anywhere in this amendment or agreement. Rather, it is up to Mon EMS to determine the number and location of the trucks in each zone. And of some other concern is that there's been some documentation of bypasses of the other ambulance services which might be closer to an incident, including one this morning, where a fully-staffed paramedic unit was three miles from a gunshot incident, and they were bypassed rather by Mon EMS, which was dispatched from downtown Morgantown. There have been a number of these incidents, and I think that this amendment fosters that situation without concern that the closest truck goes. And I think that the citizens of the county, particularly in the outreach areas, will be subject to the more lengthy response times that they've had in the past. So I am just urging the commission to reconsider this amendment, and perhaps, in the spirit of collaboration and cooperation, revisit the contract which expires next July. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Oh, go ahead.
I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
Combination here. I just have parents that are located the furthest, they're not the furthest, but they are Mon County, but touch Wetzel and Marion County. And for a response time, it's over 50 minutes for them to have response time from Mon EMS. And as the amendment stated, there's the potential for Mon EMS to come on scene and take over the scene, even if someone that was closer responds. And my preference isn't Mon EMS over Health Team, it's closest truck goes, because if not, the easiest way to get my parents to Morgantown, if there would be an issue, is to drive ourselves versus waiting on the ambulance to come, which would also have other provisions that I myself would not if I were driving them. So I would urge that the initial contract, or existing contract and/or the amendment, be revisited in entirety, so that verbiage states closest truck goes.
Thank you very much. Is there someone else who would like to speak?
I believe I'm under new business.
Oh, okay. No problem. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak? Seeing none, we will close the public portion. Colleen Kuhn. That we have no grant. Okay. Before I go on to Exec Director, Main Street, Morgantown, I see that we have several Boy Scouts here, and I'd appreciate if they would come up to the mic, state your name and what troop you're with, and, hi.
Hi, Tom. I'm sorry, I'm a little bit late.
Okay, how about if I let the Boy Scouts go, and then we'll let you go?
Thank you.
No problem.
Look at our elected officials.
Yeah. Okay. I can move that up. Good morning.
Morning, guys.
Good morning.
I am Reed Dolan.
And I am Pendel Costello.
And what troop are you with?
PAC 64.
And why, okay, PAC 6, oh, PAC 64. And what is it that you're here to accomplish today? Is it a badge, or you just like to come watch us talk?
I don't know.
Have you been to a government meeting before?
Um, no.
Good, well, we're going to make it short and quick for you, so you don't have to be here long, okay? Well, first of all, we appreciate you being in the, it's the Boy Scouts, right?
Cub Scouts.
Cub Scouts, see, that's just, and are you planning to then go towards a, be a Boy Scout?
Yes.
Good. Well, we look forward to seeing you many more times. Thank you for coming.
And feel free to stick around if you want to come up and ask any questions or anything like that after the meeting. Feel free.
Since we're, we have, and since Barbara just walked in, I'm going to move, if it's okay, to the agenda item number 12, reports from elected officials. So if you wanted to come down now, Barb?
Thank you.
And congratulations.
Oh, thank you very much. Same to you.
Thank you.
Actually, I'm not, well, I am coming in my capacity as an elected official, but I'm also coming in my capacity as a member of the board of the Clay-Battell Health Clinic. Dave Pethel, who also represents Montegalia County, and I are both members of that board. And I just, David and I both attended our monthly meeting last night, and we became aware of a new proposed agreement between Mon EMS and the county. And I got a copy of that, and I wanted to talk a little bit about it, especially, well, I have three or four things I'd like to discuss.
Sure.
I think the members of the clinic board and staff who were here before me talked about what's not in the agreement. And that's probably the most important thing, is that there's nothing in the agreement that talks about the unit, i.e. the EMS, or the ambulance that is closest, be, to every extent possible, dispatched to the site of an incident. And it was our understanding that an agreement was reached, that that was going to be what was happening. But there is absolutely nothing in the agreement, or in the attachment, which references that. And I think that is, I think everyone who has been involved in this has been trying to negotiate and collaborate in good faith, and to not have that in there is an oversight that could be fixed and should be fixed. A second thing that is a little peculiar is the change in Attachment A. And, and actually, could you give me the old Attachment A? Okay, because I'm not, oh, it's, because all I'm seeing, not Schedule A, but Attachment A. Oh. Okay, well, actually, it's.
It's a two-page Schedule A, page four and five of the contract.
Well, no, there's a new, oh, okay, I see. Well, one of the things, all right, maybe I did have that. I thought Schedule A was longer.
No.
But one of the things in the new Schedule A is a waiver of a six-month period, and I, and that is on, actually, that's in the agreement.
Okay.
And that is on page, well, page three. Upon execution of this amendment, the commission, and before, it says the attached Schedule A is included, "The commission shall forego its right to trigger any notice of termination under Section 7 of the Emergency Ambulance Service Provider Agreement, and shall not trigger the termination for the next renewal, and shall be automatically renewed for the renewed contract period beginning June 25th, 2019."
Right.
So by, if the commission were, right now, as it stands, there is a six-month period when the commission could negotiate and gather information to decide if this new proposed agreement, which I understand has been drafted by Mon EMS, is appropriate or not. And I've given you one really big reason I don't think it's appropriate, and that's because it hasn't incorporated what most people in this community, and especially the people in the outer parts of the community, think is essential, that the ambulance that is closest be sent to them. It also, so, I can't understand why it would be in the best interest of this community, or of the commission, to say, "We don't need six months to talk about this. We are going to give all authority to Mon EMS to make all decisions." And that is going to be for another five years, plus this six-month period.
Correct.
And so I, I think that is very short-sighted, not, you know, the, speaking, I, as, as a member of the board, I think that it's very comforting for people in the western end of the county to have an ambulance stationed 24 hours a day. Because a lot of times emergencies are at night, for example, rape occurs at night. And so that it's nice to have access to emergency service immediately. And so I don't understand why we wouldn't take the time to include the other groups who are affected by this and get their input. This contract was only made available to other entities last week, and you're talking about signing it by the end of the year. And that would leave out any time to craft language that would say, "First, ambulance is, should be given priority." A second piece of valuable information that you don't have is data. And I have spoken to the head of the WVU ambulance service, and as you know, that is placed out at Clay-Battell, and there is a great deal of comfort about that. And they have been keeping data since August on a daily basis of how many ambulances have, how many times EMS has dispatched their units when there was another ambulance closer. And it's my understanding, and, and there, there have been a lot of them. I can't give you exact numbers, but I can tell you some anecdotal information that I think, I know that there have been incidents in all four of the locations where the WVU ambulances are located 24 hours a day. For example, in Star City, and where, and also Star City. In Star City, there was someone at the, and you can verify this with the Star City Volunteer Fire Department, there was somebody that had a heart attack. And in the Dollar Store, and the Star City unit was not permitted to go there, so their EMS personnel had to walk to the Dollar Store to help, to rescue that person. There also was an incident this week when there was an accident on I-79, and I forget the mile marker, but I think it was around 140. And the unit out at the Clinton District could have shot out on Goshen Road to assist with that accident, but they were not, they were told they were not allowed to go, that another unit presumably from Mon EMS was going to go there, even though that, you know, there, and there were several people injured in that accident. There have also been incidents out in Clay-Battell, and there have been incidents out in Cheat Lake, where I think the, the woman who has the daughter with the peanut allergy, who probably has spoken to all of you, was very upset that there was a bypass. So it seems to me that one of the things before you sign this, you would want to have, is a very detailed look at this data. How many times were ambulances bypassed? And how many times were they told not to go to something like the accident that occurred last week on I-79? And to me, that would, I mean, your job, I'm sorry, that's my phone.
Oh, wonderful.
I'm going to open it up because we're going to respond.
Yes. I'm tired of listening.
You, the legislature has an obligation, and this commission has an obligation, to act in the public interest, and do what is best for patients and for people who are injured. And it seems to me that you would want to look at this data and see whether the contract should be modified before finalizing it, in order to take advantage of this window of six months that you have. Right now, the current contract gives you six months. You would need to write a letter saying, "We want to exercise our option to review this for six months." That's in the, sorry, guys.
That's all right.
Okay, where was I? Right now, you have that option.
To exercise.
If you sign this proposed agreement that has been drafted by Mon EMS without any input from Jan Care, Star City, or the WVU ambulance service, you will be waiving that option, and not, you will not be able to take care of that opportu, that opportunity to look at the data and to consult with other things. And so, in my opinion, as somebody who serves on the board of the Clay-Battell Clinic, and who's familiar with the comfort that it, that they have from having an ambulance service that's right there, that, you know, that is not in their best interest, and they are part of the public, too. So I would urge you to take more time on this and not be rushed, and I just don't think it's fair to have one party draft an agreement that affects the whole county and could negatively impact people in the county, you know? And obviously, I can understand why you want to have one provider to be making the decisions, but I think it's very important to have that language in, the closest available unit shall be dispatched unless there is some reason for it not to be dispatched, and that would serve the public interest in the best. So thank you for allowing me this opportunity to speak.
Well, if I can, I would like to suspend the rules if someone wants to respond, because I'm more than willing to.
Yeah, so moved.
Okay. Okay. Did you want to respond first?
No, first, uh.
Because we want to give you some more information.
Delegate, first, I appreciate your, your conversation. I would have preferred we had this conversation in private, or at the meeting last week. We had a very productive working session meeting, which again, was the, we've been working all summer on conversations about the status of the CAD system, about where we're going, about how we're going to get to the point where we're doing the CAD-assisted dispatching. Last week was a working session. We do not take official action in working sessions. It was a discussion. It was a very robust discussion, because if you were there, you'd have heard.
Well, I couldn't.
Me spouting a lot of the things that you were just saying.
I couldn't be there, and I found out about this last night, and I am here, and canceled a three-hour appointment, so that I could be here.
But I'm just, I'm just clarifying that you're kind of re-tilling dirt that we're in the process of plowing. So it's kind of premature to assume that we're already there and we're going anywhere. There's a couple misreadings of this amendment. I mean, it says plain as day, for CAD-recommended dispatching, that means closest available through the GPS system. So that, there was also a statement made about on-scene incident command. That isn't, you come on scene and you send somebody away, that's somebody that's going to be assessing the situation on behalf of the county. So again, there's a lot of misconception. We are working on this. We are in process. We aren't, we haven't signed anything, and we're not, we haven't got there yet. We're still working on this.
So, actually, thank you. What was the, what was that acronym again? Because I think of that as computer-aided design.
CAD.
That's what CAD CAM means to be, to me.
Correct.
Like, but what does it mean in this instance?
It's same thing. It's computer-aided design, but it's the GPS system where they utilize to dispatch the units. The other thing, too, is, we're in a process of, we, we have a current contract, and I'm sure you understand contracts, but we have a current contract, and we're, already have modified that, we're actually working outside of scope to bring a lot of these, these things onboard already as we work towards them. But not all the units have the CAD capability. We talked in our meeting last week about when different entities would be up to speed. For instance, you referenced the Health Team. They are not yet on the CAD system. They, they have committed to have it ready by, I believe, by December 1. So there are still things in process. If they wanted to assign the closest available through the CAD system, they wouldn't show up because they're not there yet. So there's a lot of things that still have to be worked out.
So CAD, well, for one thing, I think if it said, instead of what I think is computer-aided design, closest is available, what does that dispatch?
We could work through semantics, again, we've heard a lot of these, and again, we have data, we have mountains and mountains of data, we've had people coming to us talking, we get regular reports from Mon EMS, we hear the stories. But again, you have to be careful that you're not conflating two different contracts. You're talking about a current contract that has a first, second, third, fourth due, which is the legal document that's in place at the time, and we're moving outside that scope already inside of this contract year, and going to the computer-aided design dispatching. And then the new, new agreement will be, be going to that. So when you say, "Somebody was sent," you know, again, we have a contract in place that they're currently following, again, as we get everybody up to speed CAD, and you're talking about these, these instances, I'll reference, a Health Team unit that was there that couldn't be, they couldn't be dispatched, well, we have no way of, they're, they're not on the system yet, so they couldn't be closest dispatched. So again, there's things that we're working through as we go along, but.
Well, doesn't anyone have cell phones?
We're in a process of doing this, again, you have to work, again, in accordance with, with the protocol. When you set up standard protocol in regards to how things happen, you don't just willy-nilly make decisions to go outside that prot, protocol.
Well, it was my understanding that there was an agreement in May, that they were going to start doing closest available unit.
That was, no, okay, let me, let me clarify. That was never an agreement. What the agreement was, and that's what I want to say, you've probably sat up here when, you know, I would be in front of you saying, "Why aren't we doing this?" Well, there's been some other information that you're not getting all the information on. We've been working on this agreement for eight, eight, nine months to try it, and I want it very clear. You are right, we have, I think it's December 29th.
27th.
27th. We have to send a letter to Mon Systems saying, "We may consider termination." That allows us to negotiate, but we have to send something, like you said. We have not decided yet what we are going to do, but I do want to get some clarification. Yes, you've received some data, unfortunately so have we, and you're not getting all the data. For example, you're not getting the data that says how many times that WVU refused to answer the calls, and we had to find someone else. You don't have the data that they've had to bring up ambulance from another county to meet the needs of this county. These are the kind of things that we're concerned, but the biggest.
Well, has that been shared with WVU?
The, the groups.
All this is, yeah, they have.
Well, that's what I think.
The groups meet monthly.
Yeah, they have, they know, they're all aware of that.
With 911 and Mon EMS.
Well.
They discuss this monthly.
But here's the biggest thing, and let me just say, this is my biggest concern. They had informed us that by July 1, they would be on the system, ready to go. Now they're saying December 1. So my question to you is, what would have happened if, because politically, we said, "Well, we're going to go now with WVU back in July through this time period," they wouldn't have been on the system? So we've been very concerned.
You can draft language, I, I understand.
No, no, it isn't drafting.
This is equipment.
It's equipment.
Right.
They were not on the system, so therefore MECA could not follow the rules. So that, that's what I'm saying, so.
Well, you could, and what I'm saying is, you could draft language, assuming that was true, that they wouldn't be available to July 1. You could still draft language, say that you will, and I think it's very important not to use acronyms that have two different meanings. I think if you, if you mean closest available dispatch, that should be in the agreement, as opposed to computer-aided design.
No, we're using the terms that are used by 911 and MECA. And, and I think what has happened is, unfortunately, I know that the WVU, one of the ambulances is out in your area, you know, is.
Right.
Well, there's also another one, so what we have done was put it by five zones, and then we.
Six.
Six zones.
Yeah, I saw that.
Okay, so then they come from the zones. What we have done is unbelievably cut down the response time. There is no 45 minutes. I can tell you that right now. The peanut allergy was four years ago. So what we have learned is, what we had before with the system, that wasn't working, and we agree. That's why we met with Mon Health. Then we started implementing the process, and hopefully, December 1, we will be on the CAD system with everyone's together, and then we'll be able to see how it works. And that's what our goal is right now. But it is a contract between the county and Mon Health, and we are going to do what's in the best interest of everyone in the community, and that's what we're trying to do.
I still don't think that there's any reason to forego the six-month period that is in the current. I still don't think that there's any reason to forego the six-month period that is in the current contract to work any bugs out. I think there are real bugs in here, and I, I'm not.
But see, our data shows, see, you don't have the data.
Have you seen the data from WVU?
Yes.
No, you have not.
We have seen all the data that we've been allowed to see. That WVU is giving it to MON. They had the opportunity last week to give us that data.
Well, did they know? They didn't even know this contract was going to be presented last week.
We're getting into a debate here.
I think this is a debate that is.
We have, every time we meet, we post our agenda. If we're meeting regarding this subject, anybody can meet and come to those meetings.
They were here.
I would suggest that when we have this discussion, have these discussions at those work session meetings. Because right now, we're not ready to decide anything. So, again, there's a lot of, we have a lot of other business to take care of. We bumped this agenda up.
I think there's more to the information, and there is an upcoming meeting that we're going to look at. So, we're waiting to hear from the two groups.
I'd like to continue with our meeting, please.
All right. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I urge you not to forego the six-month thing, because I think it's an opportunity to get a better contract.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there any other elected officials who'd like to speak since we have it this time? Okay, if not, we'll get back on the agenda. We will move to number seven, Barbara Watkins.
Grants.
We already did grants.
No.
She said she hadn't. That was way ahead. Barbara Watkins, Executive Director, Main Street Morgantown. Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you for having me this morning, and happy Thanksgiving for tomorrow.
Thank you.
Happy Thanksgiving to you, too.
First of all, I just want to report, give you like a little update on our projects we've been doing out throughout the year. And with that, I want to report that, you know, Main Street Morgantown has moved to have, to develop two themes for our organization. One is called, we are listening. And with that, we've been holding quarterly meetings with the downtown merchants, property owners, residents, County Commission, city, you know, anybody that feels that they, you know, we feel that the whole community, MON County, along with the region, have a vested interest in our downtown. So, with that, we've been holding these little after hours, we call them our downtown after-hours, to, as a, we are listening, to get the input from everybody to move this organization forward. And our second theme is building a great place. We're looking to build downtown as a great place through more events, working with our partners, our property owners, and our business owners, and of course, all the residents that we have in MON County. And with that, we have added several more events. Along with that, we're actually collaborating more with, you know, the CBB, Arts MON, and other organizations throughout MON County. And we've added, you know, in the past, I'm sure that you're all familiar with, maybe Chocolate Lover's Day and Kids' Day and our Arts Walk. But this past year, we have had, you know, besides our Chocolate Lover's Day, which brought in over 1,500 participants in our downtown, we have added several more. You know, we have a Spring Arts Walk that we've had here. You know, and although it was small, we still brought, you know, several hundred people downtown to enjoy the evening. And we're looking, next year, we're looking to partner actually with Leadership MON to add additional arts walks throughout the summer. So, that's another way we're trying to collaborate with organizations in our, for the downtown. Also, we, you know, we have, now we have a Cruisin'. We've had it for several years, but we have a Cruisin' for May, June, July, and August. So, now we have four Cruisins throughout the year. And of course, we have what we call our bazaar that we have in June, July, and August. This year, we've had, we had the Celebration of America. We had music on the Courthouse Square, along with the fireworks. And there is another thing that we're doing, besides all of our events, we have lots of other events. You know, we have a Kids' Day. We had a fun football evening when we had the one night game, so that we invited people to come out and listen to music on the Courthouse Square. You know, we had our Far Arts Walk, we've brought several thousand down. Our International Street Festival that we're partnering with WVU with. And of course, our Small Business Saturday, which will be this coming Saturday. But with all of these events, we're looking to access the Courthouse Square more, just not with our events, but in the future to have, you know, music on, you know, maybe Thursday evenings, where, you know, Wednesday or Thursday evenings, just to bring people to downtown, just to enjoy, you know, just sit and listen to music, maybe have, you know, some food trucks down to, you know, if people want to purchase, or, you know, to visit the sit-down restaurants. So, we're looking so, to do all of that with, even more with the Courthouse Square. We're actually looking to bring back, I'm sure Tom probably remembers, and I would think Dr. Hawkins would remember, the West Virginia Birthday Party. I'm not sure then if Mrs. Corrigan remembers it or not, but we used to have a West Virginia Birthday Party years ago, and we're looking to bring that back this summer. And of course, we would have music on the Courthouse Square, along with bringing back the cake cutting, and add a few other, to see what else we might want to add to have that event brought back. So, I want to actually come and thank the County Commission for the use of the courthouse. I can't tell you what an asset it is to our organization and how useful it has been, and how much we are glad to have it renovated. I mean, I find it to, you know, with sitting up for our events, I find the new renovations to be absolutely fabulous. So, I wanted to let you know that. The electricity is such a huge asset, and thank you, thank you very much for having that, that. So, and, so I don't know, I guess, maybe it's not the rule to ask questions. I wanted to give you that, be able to ask me questions, but I guess that's not the rule, so I won't ask that. But I would like to ask one thing. I do have an ask that you consider. You know, I submitted a letter requesting to be able to have a holiday tree back on the Courthouse Square again. We had one a couple years ago before the renovations. And I would like to ask if we could please have that back again. It will be a simple tree. We're, actually, we're just looking to have it lit, white lights so that it does not interfere with any of the other lights that are already on the Courthouse Square, because I think that's a huge, huge asset to us, so. So, that's, that would just be my only ask, if you consider that, so that we can get that up before the parade on December 3. And that's basically all I wanted to report. I just wanted to record the use of the square, how we're looking forward to even access it even more in the future with having, you know, like I said, bands. We have, you know, I don't know if you've listened to Trial by Fire. They, they're usually our go-to band. They're so happy to come down and play for us and to set up on the square to play. So, we'll be doing that in the future, so.
Tom, if I may, we have that under correspondence to the letter, but can we go ahead and just?
Sure, that's fine.
I move that we accept the request from Morgantown Main Street to have a holiday tree at the Courthouse Square. And you have the dimensions for the, again, for everybody, when we built, redid the Courthouse Square, we built in the ability to have tree. You don't have to have a stand, so it's a safety factor, which, you know, you've got the dimensions for the size tree that you can utilize, and.
That is correct, yes.
Yeah, I'd move that we. Yeah, I would just coordinate with our maintenance department, and you can, you can do that through Renetta. She'll put you in contact with Bobby or whoever you need to talk to.
And I'd like to second that. We refer to it as the Christmas Hanukkah Kwanzaa Bush.
We get everybody involved, that's it.
Yes, and that's our intention.
And from your letter, it's, you want to install the tree by December 1, and I understand that that's the date of the parade.
December 3rd.
Oh, the 3rd, so, but the 3rd, you're going to do something in conjunction with 4H?
Yes, we're looking, we're hoping that the 4H, we can have a light-up on December 3rd. So, we're hoping that they would be okay with that, so yes.
And they requested that, too.
Yeah, that's why I brought it up, so people would know that, you know, you'll have the parade downtown, and you'll have a light-up ceremony, however, it's, which goes first or whatever. But I appreciate your efforts in that regard.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, from Pop moving second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
You now have the multi-religious tree.
Denominational tree.
Denominational tree.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. Thank you, and you all have a happy holiday.
Okay, thank you. Have a good Thanksgiving. Okay, County Clerk Certification of the 2008 General Election.
Obviously, she's not here today, so.
But we have a certificate that's provided in your inbox, and I would move that we approve the certification as forwarded by the clerk.
Second.
From Pop moving second to certify the election, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
It passes. Correspondence, besides the letter we just had.
I do not have anything else.
Good. Unfinished business.
No.
We're moving along. Eleven, new business. To consider approval for requisition number 10 for the Morgantown Industrial Park Series 2017 AE Phase 2 Project Fund. And the cost is?
You put me on the spot.
Move for approval.
Second.
Pop moving second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Passes. Consider the application for after-hours key card access to the MON County Courthouse, County Clerk's Office by George Armistead, Attorney at Law.
Good, good, good.
Second.
Pop moving second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And what, I know 240 people are very interested right now in listening to, to consider closing county offices a full day for Christmas Eve and New Year's Eve.
Can we back up just one second? We do have one piece of correspondence.
Sorry. Received a letter from Cynthia Van Stafford. She's one of your fiduciary commissioners.
Oh.
Just giving you her letter of resignation, effective December 31st.
Okay, do I have a?
I move to accept the resignation and to request that the County Clerk initiate the proceedings to source out another fiduciary commissioner.
Second motion.
Pop moving second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, sorry.
Oh, no, that's all right. Now, consider the closing county offices a full day for Christmas Eve and New Year's Eve, which fall on Mondays. So, basically, it would be Saturday, Sunday, Monday, and then the Tuesday holiday, rather than coming back for one day, because I know we do so much business on that day.
Move for approval with discussion.
Second.
Okay.
Now, on those days, they're already a half-day holiday.
Yes.
So, essentially, we're closing the buildings so the employees can take a full day for the holiday. We cannot control the Circuit Court. So, we've, I've been in communication with them to let them know what we are doing, just so there's no confusion, and they communicate with the employees. But I don't think from the court side, there's going to be any hearings or anything going on. But by law, we cannot close the Circuit Clerk's Office. So, that will at least have to be manned by a skeleton crew for that four hours, for if anybody needs to file anything. So, we'll, after this call, we'll talk to, if the Circuit Court is in, we'll talk to her or a designee to let them know that, and we also, Perry's not here, but we'll need to correspond with Perry in regards to security. But I assume that they can have a skeleton crew for that four hours.
Hopefully, the governor declares it a full holiday, and that way.
Right, then we don't have to worry about.
Yeah, but I appreciate the Chief Judge Susan Tucker. Her and I have been back and forth, again, just to communicate, so they were aware of what we were doing, and try to do this in coordination, and if their hands are tied right now, but at least they can inform the employees in quarterly.
Okay, from Pop moving second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Great. Any other new business?
No.
Okay, seeing none, and we already have reports from elected officials. Sean, if you want to go first on the County Commission report.
Okay.
Then we're almost done.
Mine will be really quick. Last Friday, I went to the MON County Fair Board. They had a murder mystery dinner, so my wife and I went to support the fair, and to, something for us to do outside of being home on a Friday. So, it was, I really enjoyed myself. It was a fun event. Ed, I don't even know if you made it, because I was on one corner and.
Well, I was at the Historical Society meeting, of which I'm president.
No, you kind of had to be there.
Was not able to be in two places at once.
This week, on Tuesday, we had, we had a lightly attended Extension Building meeting. Commissioner Hawkins and I attended with Keith Hearnstrun to just go over any loose ends. We're going to have another meeting on Tuesday, but the meeting was scheduled, and Ed and I showed up, so we had it. And then after that, I went out to Mason Dixon Historical Park. I took Coach Ellis, who is the Suncrest Middle School cross-country coach, and JR, our park superintendent, who's been doing a wonderful job with that park, is really interested in getting more activity by the cross-country teams at that park. So, Coach Ellis brings 100 kids, his being the largest team in the state. So, even if his team was just there, he'd still fill the park. So, we had a nice trip. JR drove us around the park. We have some suggestions for a course, and we're going to go back in spring and kind of finalize things. But hopefully, next, next fall, we'll be looking at an actual meet, a MON County meet, being held at the Mason Dixon Historical Park. And it's really cool, I mean, the kids can run from West Virginia to Pennsylvania to West Virginia to Pennsylvania, and run along the stream, and run to the top of the hill where the marker is. I mean, it's also historical and a very beautiful park, so I'm looking forward to working with JR for that. And other than that, I wish all of our county employees happy Thanksgiving, and may you all have a safe, happy holiday with your family and friends.
Thank you.
It was my pleasure last Thursday to represent, or to be here and to welcome those from the County Risk Pool to address those in attendance who wish to listen to their overview presentation. As I stated Friday, I was at the Historical Society, where we always welcome new members, especially younger members. Saturday, I did attend the fundraiser for Special Olympics. It was a non-polar plunge at Crab Shack, so I didn't have to jump into the rivers of the MON or Sheet Lake as I have in years past. But that's still coming up in February, however. As Sean mentioned, we did have a meeting Tuesday. Last night was a Fireman's Association meeting. It was in Star City. Part of the discussion, it is something to note, since this is coming up in other discussions, it does involve MUB on one of the discussions, and the pressure available at fire hydrants. Apparently, the standard that is presented by one entity, which is the Health Department, is abysmally low. I think it's 250 PSI, but we require the, around 1,200 would be a good. And on average in the county, it appears it's somewhere between 5 and 6. Most of the problem is that line extensions continue to happen, and then, when you go further, the pressure then drops from that hydrant, where it may have been to pressure at one point in time. And I think this is going to be something that is going to have to be discussed along with, you know, what we do at the Fireman's Association meeting. Tomorrow, of course, is Thanksgiving, and I want you to be thankful for what you have, and give them remembrance that yesterday was the Farmington Mine Explosion. You know, I was 20 years old when this happened, and this did affect a lot of people. There wasn't, I don't think, anybody in MON or Marion, Harrison County, who didn't know somebody who perished in that explosion. But as Sean mentioned, we will have another meeting. And on Wednesday, after our next meeting, we will go for the Two Bridge Board for the County Commissioners Association of West Virginia. It's a basic training, but we're attending in that there's always some information that you can get. It's sort of like, in my previous profession, continuing education. When you go and you listen and you learn one thing that you didn't know before, then it has been worth the time that you've been there. Thank you.
Thank you. Usually, I don't respond about the MON Rails and Trails meeting, but we came up with something we've never done before. We have requested the board from there to meet with the board of Bow Park, because there's been numerous cutbacks, and we're trying to get our priorities straight for the Rails and Trails in the next several years. So, we thought if the two groups met, got together, we could kind of prioritize what's going on. And especially, we've had so many slips, as you know, we've had to pay for extra slips, and it's getting worse. So, it's something that we're going to have to look at and take care of. On Saturday, we had the first time the Food Pantry gave away 12,000 pounds of food in Granville. It was unfortunately our largest turnout. We had 207 individual families, 675 members. And I'm glad we're able to help, but at the same time, that worries me, because it's getting larger than smaller. I did get to go to Philly and come back, and I can tell you, they have potholes like we do, except they have potholes where the people stand around and look at them and do nothing. That's the difference, but I just don't understand. It's honestly, the weather's just wrecked havoc on the roads, and I think everyone's having to deal with this problem. And finally, I want to say, we are working very hard to make sure that everyone is treated fairly and equally with this EMS problem. We have made great strides. We are under a contract. We are moving forward, and I want to give MON Health due credit for modifying their agreement as we move forward. I do want to say, I'm a little frustrated that we had a 90-minute meeting last week. and none of the issues that came out could have been discussed at that time, so I'm a little shocked on that. However, I will say, out of that meeting, I don't know if anyone knows, but on Monday at 1:30, we're meeting with the head of MON EMS and also WVU in a meeting, and I, I just don't understand. It just frustrates me. We're going through the proper channels and then there's other information given out. So, I really hope that people understand we are working together, we are trying to resolve this issue, and we're moving forward on it.
Well, and again, to that point, it seems the assumption is-
Is we, we're not paying attention to the details or we don't know what we're doing. Um, but we really are paying attention to the details and we really do know what we're doing, uh, and we're working to that, to that end, so, um, I, I, again-
The meeting Monday is-
I just asked for trust that-
Yeah.
Trust that we are going to get there.
Move to adjourn.
Second. Okay. We are adjourned. Thank you very much. Happy Thanksgiving.